For the pleasure to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, would you please take roll call?
Yes. Councilman Johnson?
Present.
Councilman Conley?
Present.
Councilman Schmidt?
Here.
Councilman Getzloff?
Present.
Councilwoman Roberts?
Here.
We have Tom Anderson, Bob Volkmann?
Present.
Director of Water Works Jeff Hewitt?
Here.
Deputy Secretary Robert Tino?
Present.
Attorney David Oshin?
Present.
We have Fire Chief Bob Patterson? And Police Chief?
Here.
And Deputy Chief Cook?
Here.
Deputy Chief Fire Chief Meyer?
Here.
Town Court Tom Anderson?
Here.
And our media supervisor Timonik?
Here.
Thank you. The Water Works Board consists of three members, Tom Schmidt, Kevin Conley, and myself, Robert Armadas. The first item on the agenda for the Water Works meeting is the minutes of the September 9th, 2020 meeting.
Convened.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda would be claims. Are there any additional claims, Mr. Johnson?
No additional claims, Mr. President. Will you approve claims?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda we move reports. Mr. Volkmann, do you have any additional reports?
Yes, Madam Chairman, I have one report. For the last several months, we've been working with Verizon Wireless, who is a tenant on the 91st Water Tower. They have requested some additional easement from the town. There was a lot of documentation that was flying back and forth. I apologize if this wasn't on the agenda, but the documents were probably just finalized yesterday afternoon when the town engineer signed off on a legal description. David Oshin has also been working on that. I would try to look for us a motion to probably the Water Board authorizing the town, Council President Tom Schmidt, to prioritize those and sign those easement agreements with Verizon Wireless.
I move to approve.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero.
I'm sorry, Madam Chairman, you shouldn't probably second a motion.
I'm sorry, I'm second. Second, second on the motion.
Are there additional reports from the council members? It's that there is no old business, there is no new business. Do we have any business from the floor? Any business from the floor? This meeting is adjourned.
I'll go to the redevelopment commission meeting for Wednesday, October 14th, 2020, timed at 7:18 p.m. We'll bring Councilman Rob Getzloff and Caleb Johnson into the roll call for the redevelopment commission meeting. Minutes of this September 9th, 2020 public meeting, question board?
Convened. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Claims, any additional claims, Mr. Johnson? No, Mr. President. Thank you.
So, no claims?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Yes, it's five to zero. Any reports from staff?
No reports.
You, council members?
No.
None.
Hearing that, we have no old business. We have one item under new business. I may consider acceptance of application for facade improvement program for $26,489.94. The applicant is Kelly Law Offices LLC, location 1619 Junction Avenue. And it comes with a favorable recommendation by the town facade advisory committee by the Board for the three to zero. Mr. Volkmann?
Yes, council members, this is the building right across the street from the town hall here. It's been under renovation for several months. There was, it was a pretty complicated project. They completely renovated both the inside and the outside of the building. It's part of, this is the first project we did with the facade incentive grant, which has a maximum ceiling of $50,000. I don't know what the tolls have spent on the building, but the things that qualified on the facade, which was basically the front of the base of Juliette and the bases Junction, 25% of that improvement equals the $26,489.94.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I am Michael Sushi. I'm one of the partners with Kelly Law Offices. Just wanted to come and say thank you for all the work Mr. Volkmann has done and the council on this. We do have one issue we'd like to raise. It's not?
Is it not?
Yes. Okay, there we go. Do I have to say everything again, or did you guys get all that?
No, you're good.
Okay, perfect. So, the one issue that we would just like to raise as far as a question or a request, I guess, for reconsideration is the facade program provides for some assistance with parts of the building that face the public street as well as consideration of any facades that provides public entrance to the building. And with that in mind, I think the part of the facade that is approved would be the west-facing portion of the building, the south-facing portion of the building. However, we do have an entrance on the east side as well. So, we would like some reconsideration for the new siding and work that was done on that portion of the building. And then last, as far as when you consider where the public enters a building, while there was no apportionment of any funds for the north side of the building, we would like you to reconsider that. The reason being is this, our parking is on the north side. So, everyone from the public who comes to our building sees the north side of the building. Not to mention the southbound traffic on Junction sees the north portion of the building. So, in getting the apportionment for not only the siding, but the roof, I think only half the roof was considered. And what we would like the council to consider is the fact that the roof, basically, you know, cutting it in half, that is the integrity of a building, right? Everything starts with the roof. So, the whole point of the facade program is to encourage businesses and encourage redevelopment in the downtown area. And whether it be for us or something in the future for other businesses, we'd like the council to consider that the roof should be considered as a whole. Whether you can see the roof from Juliette Street, no, I admit you can't see the north side of the roof. But the roof, again, protects the entirety of the building, protects the integrity of the building. And again, our customers, our public are entering from that side. That is where the parking is. So, we would just ask that the council reconsider the siding estimate and roofing estimate for that northward portion of the building. And then certainly for that eastward portion of the building, where, like I said, there is an actual entrance on that side. And that would be consistent with actually paragraph one of the Shareville facade improvement program. With that said, we can't thank you enough for all the work you've done, the patience with our dust over the last six months. And I'll leave it at that. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Volkmann, would this be a situation where they would have to reappear in front of the facade committee to?
We actually have all the information that might describe. I think we did use, because there's a little porch there, and I think we included that, the little porch. And I don't know if you replaced that door there on that backside.
Not the door, we did include the porch. We were just asking about the siding.
The siding on that side, I understand.
Be considered as well.
Yeah, and so, they put siding windows on that side of the building. Fortunately, the windows, he did have competitive price line. There's only one bid on the windows, which he did, and he put two or three windows on this side. But when you consider those, we did not have, it did meet the requirements of the ordinance that had two bids.
Right. That's true. We didn't get any money for any of the windows because, quite frankly...
It's for the windows on this west side.
Right. With the situation that happened this year and the construction being slowed down, by the time we were able to actually get a second bid, no one could give it to us because they were a solid product of their way. And they weren't going to take their time to do it. It's kind of where we were left with that. So, we didn't get any funds for that and according to the ordinance source, we're asking that.
And I think at this point, we're prepared to vote on what was approved by the facade committee, correct?
Correct. And because I don't even know that all the work on the landscaping plan is completed yet. So, this is only one portion. And then as they turn in, they have to turn in their invoicing waivers and inspections have to ensure that the work has been completed. And then, you know, there may be more than one block. If someone works complete, I know he's got a lot of side work he's completed. I don't know if landscaping will get done this year or not.
It's scheduled to start next week.
Okay, well, you might have everything on this particular petition ready to go. But if you so directly, you can certainly reevaluate the rest of the package.
Yeah, I think we're prepared to vote on what's in front of us right now with further consideration. What you guys going to definitely enhance our downtown. We're happy that you're here and happy to see all the work that you're doing. And you're right, we do want to, you know, partner with businesses that come to our downtown to do what's best for the community. So, I think it would be further consideration.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay. Anything further, Mr. Volkmann?
No, that's it.
Pleasure board?
So, we are, we are voting on...
You have in front of us the approval by the facade committee. And the other stuff will be in the meeting. Okay, motion to accept then the application for our Kelly Law Offices for the facade.
Second, with the comment, Mr. Volkmann, so low, will that go back in front of the facade committee?
I would have to, you know, if you, if you so direct, because that's, you know, the way that it says it talks about the facade facing corner lots facing the two streets. So, that's why we didn't use the north or the east side of the building. If you, as redevelopment commission directs us to evaluate those recorrections, I have no time doing that. But we would recommend the committee evaluate the package and make a recommendation.
I think that's appropriate for the, to have our committee throw at it. Because that's what they're, that's what they're there for.
That's what the guidelines.
Does he run a unique location there?
It is, and that's why I'm saying, I know that that north side of the building isn't visible from Juliette Street or Junction, but it is for the southbound traffic on Junction. And like I said, it's our parking lot. So, all our customers, all our clientele, they do see that side of the building. And that's why we're asking for consideration of the north side of the roof and the north side of the siding. And we haven't submitted anything yet, but we are going to repave that parking area as well.
Mr. Chairman, I now have a question for Mr. Oshin too. Would we, would we be able, as a council, be able to make an exception to the facade ordinance if, if we desired?
The answer is no. You need to follow the ordinance according to its terms, including how you evaluate and assess each request. Going back to your committee, it is appropriate.
Should the motion be amended then, Mr. Johnson?
Should.
Motion is amended.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Yes, it's five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Any business from the floor regarding redevelopment? Any business from the floor? Any business from the floor? This meeting is adjourned. I'd like to call the utility board meeting to order for Wednesday, October 14th, at 7:30. Except same roll call we had for the redevelopment committee. Approval of the minutes of September 9th, 2020, public meeting, pleasure of the board.
Convened. Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five to zero. Claims, any additional claims, Mr. Johnson? No additional claims, Mr. President. Thank you. Pleasure board?
Motion is second.
The motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five to zero. Reports from staff, Mr. Volkmann, any reports?
Aye.
Council members?
No reports.
Report. There is no old business, under new business, Resolution 2020-15, this resolution to transfer funds within the category of appropriations. Mr. Johnson? Yes, Mr. President. As you see there, the resolution there for wastewater operating maintenance fund were transferred from certain items out of that account to other ones to cover expenses that my budget rolled in this year. Pleasure board? Motion to approve?
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five to zero. Is there any business from the floor regarding utilities? Any business from the floor regarding utilities? Any business from the floor regarding utilities? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.
Good evening. I'd like to call top council meeting for the town shareville for Wednesday, October 14th, at 7:32 p.m. The first item on the agenda is roll call. Roll call is Davis County Utility Board. Second item is the minutes of September 9th, public meeting.
Convened.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Next item is claims. Mr. Johnson, any additional claims?
No, Mr. President, no additional claims from the council. Will you approve claims?
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Reports from staff, Mr. Volkmann?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, similar to the Water Board hearing, the council should take action on the Horizon lease authorizing Council President to sign these documents.
Convened.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Motion, motion carries five to zero.
I have one other item, Mr. Chairman, and there was a application for a special event permit at Tobacco Island for a car show. That's scheduled to happen this weekend. Pursuant to the requirements of our ordinance, that requires you to take council action on approving or denying that request. It was amended by staff, police department, and they have the correct insurance, part of the plan. Security, they have their own office, basically a car show. The hours are from 1:00 to 10:00 on Saturday.
I have one question. I have two, so much. Sir, the security that they were going to have, is it our, is it our police or?
No, it's their own. It's the private security.
Private security.
The one is your status for that event.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. President, there's some new information provided this evening. Any motion to approve the event?
Second.
We have a motion, second, on a special permit for the car show. All in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other reports from staff, Mr. Volkmann?
No.
Mr. Hewitt?
No report.
Chief Sornix? Not at this time. Chief Patterson?
Not at this time.
Mr. Johnson?
Not at this time, Mr. President.
Deputy chiefs? Mr. Cook?
Not at this time.
Mr. Meyer?
Not at this time.
Thank you, thank you. Council members? Any reports from council members?
Yes, sir.
No, no reports from council members at this time. We'll move that next item. The next item is any public comments regarding items that's on the agenda. Please step up, Steve McNamee and Andrews for the record.
Good evening. Greg Bauer here on behalf of Nova Garden Properties and Sentier Bank. Greg, grab the mic. Grab it. If you would please, the council, we'd like to make some comments tonight about the variance of use that's been requested for 1516 through 1530, US 41. May you proceed?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. Thank you for your service to the town of Shareville. As this council knows, the ultimate decision with a variance of use resides with this council pursuant to standards, Indiana statutes, and pursuant to the town ordinances. In particular, we want to make sure that the council is aware of all the issues regarding this particular variance of use, which we believe is different than anything you've considered in the past. I know two council members were at the BCA hearing, but at this time, I'd like to present to you the written materials that were tendered to... Say it again, one more time? No, you do. I think we're going to change five. You got it? We obviously believe this is an appropriate situation for the variance of use. Your overlay district restricts, excludes storage centers from this overlay district on Route 41. That's the only reason why this can't go in in this particular area. We made some decisions regarding that overlay district, but we think this is prime for this particular variance of use. This is a facility, 57,000 square feet, that has been vacant for three or four years now. I think Sentier Bank would speak briefly with respect to that and all of their efforts over the last three to four years. And this, the particular use that we're proposing, will utilize the whole facility. This is an inside storage, so climate control. And why we think this is particularly appropriate for this retail center, because this is a retail use. And these materials that were tendered to the town that are actually toward the end of this material, 67% of the users of this inside storage are female. 50% of the users are over the age of 55. These are consumers that are using this inside storage facility. The outside of Ashley Furniture, as you know it, will not change. I think in the materials that were tendered to you, there's a yellow tab, so you can quickly flip to that. That yellow tab shows that the exterior appearance essentially doesn't change. We do have to add drive-in or stucco panels to the top to protect the second floor. That drive-in will match the drive-in on the front of the store. So, essentially, you're going to have the same look. So, with this variance of use, what changes? What changes from this climate-controlled inside storage? Well, there'll be less parking demands. The center right now is stressed out with parking. And if we try to separate that 57,000 square feet, and Sentier Bank might touch on this, the parking demands accelerate on something like this. Well, this inside storage actually decreases. The materials in here show that there's going to be approximately only 20 visits per day. The prime use is on Saturday from 12 to 2, and then it increases to three to four visits per hour. But in those prime areas, it will increase to three to four visits. But the parking is rather insignificant the rest of the time, 20 visits in an entire day. There's no semis that will be associated with this. We heard a comment at the BCA that they're tired of semis from Ashley Furniture going in and out. Actually, this will eliminate that. In fact, what they intend to do with that semi trailer pit in the back that lowers the trailer, they're actually going to fill that in. So, normal personal vehicles will be the majority of use to drop off from the female and older users of this facility. This type of facility actually generates less traffic, which will be a benefit to all the other tenants and will help all of the spades be fully occupied at this time. I'm sure you're aware of the retail situation in the United States with Amazon grabbing more and more market share. We touched on that in the materials that we tendered. But the two shopping centers at the corners, at those respective corners, the Stratten and Till Shopping Center Walmart and the Tebow Center, is what I refer to it as, has significant vacancy in it. This will take a huge amount of vacancy off that, for the 57,000 square foot single floor, but we're going to expand it to two floors, inside storage use. And George Nova Garden actually came here tonight too. He is an individual that has all three lots under contract to acquire. This inside storage, which was tendered in the materials to you, is only for Lot 1, which is only the Ashley building. This will not apply to any of the other buildings there. It cannot be expanded. But what it does is it takes 57,000 square feet off the vacancy market. I think Sentier Bank will also touch on, the real estate taxes have been reduced significantly because of the vacancy. And this will actually increase the real estate tax base because my client, Nova Garden Properties, intends on investing $1.8 million in that center building. Jobs, huge investment in this area for that facility. And ultimately, you know, we'd ask you to consider also who this inside storage facility serves. It serves your residents. It'll serve 67% female residents, over 50%, 55 and over residents. And what generates the use here, you'll see that in the material, death in the family, moving, divorce, unfortunately. There's many drivers inside storage, climate control. But your residents, that huge residential section immediately to the west, the apartment community to the south, your residents will be the people who utilize this inside storage. And right now, you can see from the materials buried in there, but I'll highlight it, is that the current occupancy rates are 92%. It's a high-demand product. We also tendered to you, Nova Garden is in partnership with Atwater Group, and they have these facilities in Chicago Land Market, and we tendered that to the BCA. But what's also tendered to this council tonight is two other facilities, one in Roseville, Minnesota, another in Salt Lake City, Utah. Those are both far away. But the median income is about the same, within, I'd say, 10%, 15% of Shareville. The home prices are about the same, home prices. And in those communities, similar-type shopping centers in similar space have converted to inside storage. And they've taken vacant space and turned it into a dynamic center that works. And it works for their residents. And we believe this will be a benefit to the town and a benefit to the town residents. We highlighted the office hours, the office hours are home 9:30 to 6:00, access is 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. The office is closed on Sunday. The traffic will be relatively significant based on what was indicated. There's going to be five to six employees associated with this site. Jobs will be created. Right now, the space is vacant. Well, it's being occupied by Halloween. And then I think there's a Christmas program that is not coming this year. But... But this will be a good viable use for this facility if this town council sees the benefits of what it can do for the town and the town residents. Again, we want to highlight the vehicles that will be using this. I gave you the demographics on the users. The personal vehicles, their pickup trucks, small movie vans, the U-Haul. It's not the semis who utilize this, so it's actually going to improve traffic, improve parking. It's an improvement all around, an improvement to the real estate tax base. We showed you the successful conversions attached to this material, and this isn't going to be a one-off where we create the business to occupy this. Mr. Nova Gordo, George, who started out with Pine Island with Jerry Ferguson back in the 70s, is going to own it, and you bring in a partner like Extra Space Storage to operate it and operate it with the best technology that's out there, keypad access, scan card to get in. All those type of technologies that Extra Space Storage brings, we also demonstrated to the town in one of the packs that's attached with the size of the company. It's premier companies area. So you're going to get top-notch operations. You're going to get a local person, started out local at least, who's going to own it and operate it with Extra Space Storage. You're going to have a long-term commitment for that space. With that, I'd of course be excited if I got any questions from the town council, but...
I just have two, Mr. Cherry.
Yes, Mr. Cog.
Sorry, I just wanted to make sure, I know it's a seven-day operation, and those operation hours are 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM?
For key access, yes.
For key access. And then, are workers going to be on premises all during those hours?
No. Workers' offices are open 9:30 to 6:00 PM, six days.
And I did think that this would have all kinds of cameras?
It's going to have the best security. David Soles is here for the other meeting. They're trying to put these facilities in other locations throughout the United States, and he's traveling right now, but he indicated they have cameras everywhere, and the keypad shut it down. No one can access it's building. And if they do, somehow someone will break in, the cameras are watching, and it's security around the clock. So that's part of the platform that Extra Space Storage brings to it, is they have a model for all of this. I know they have clever marketing materials in the package I tendered to you, but they bring a multi-billion dollar business to this space, this extra space or inside storage space. So you're going to get the best technology, best security, best operations, and that's why George Nova Gordo, Mr. Nova Gordo, that's why they're bringing them in, to make sure it's top-notch.
Any other questions for Attorney Paul?
No.
Do you want to speak to him briefly, George?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Paul.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I know I took a little bit of time here, and I can take you through every page of this material, but I don't know if you would really...
Yes, please state your name.
Hi, my name is George Nova Gordo. Certainly not new to Shererville. My very first real estate project was at Cedar Point, Everett 30 and Bar, and I've continued to manage it the last 45 years. This project was brought to me, and I was told one of the big problems when Ashley was in there was the parking problem. When Ashley would have to stay off, all the other tenants had a real hard time getting parking for their customers. The space has been vacant for, as you know, for three or four years now. The users that take 15,000, 60,000 square feet are few and far between today. Companies like Kohl's, Michael's, you know, they're just not expanding. In fact, as we see, they're retracting. This space doesn't have very good visibility because it's set back and the buildings out inside really take away from the visibility. So getting another retailer in there is very difficult. And the smaller uses, which I do a lot of construction for, the drug chains and the dollar stores are all over this area. They're just not looking for additional locations. The nice thing about these climate-controlled facilities is where women and elderly do not want to go to these large garage storage places, they feel secure going into a facility like this. And during the prime hours, eight or nine hours a day, it's staff. I think it'll increase the real estate tax base, and I think it would not be unusual that this space could remain vacant for another three or four years, especially in the commercial climate that we're in today. Most people that come into these facilities are in and out within 15 minutes. They're coming to drop something off or pick something up, and they sort of run in and out. A large percentage are just doing it in their regular car. You know, I think it will benefit local residents, and I will continue to own it and manage it. And thank you for your time listening to me, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you for any questions.
Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else who would like to make comments on the ten items?
Good evening. My name is Helen Miller. I represent Sentier Bank. I have been involved with this project for many, many years, including with the previous borrower, and unfortunately, that did not work out, as you can see. It is unfortunate. It's not something that Sentier Bank likes to do, nor does Sentier Bank want to be in the realm of owning real estate either. So what we tried to do is try to either sell it to the best person to recoup this business or, in this case, this retail strip center. It has been with Sentier for at least three years now, four years tops. We've had it with a national broker and a local broker for all of those years, to the point of looking for tenants for the 57,000 square feet and buyers. We have gone through at least five possible buyers with LOIs who could not bring this project together. They have been local buyers, and they have been out-of-state buyers, and none of them have come to fruition. And so Mr. Nova Gordo approached us about this idea here, and we felt that we would try and see if this would work. And as you heard with the Trent Bauer, we have lost revenue on this. The town has lost revenue on this because we have gotten appeal on property taxes for this property, and it was cut in half because of the vacancy of 57,000 square feet. And in that time, we have done a lot of digging on trying to bring retailers down to this plaza of those 57,000 square feet, including those that are crossing over from the Highland property over to the Shands on Main. We've talked to Marshalls, we've talked to Abilobby, we've had LOIs from Abilobby. In the end, they didn't want to be that far south. They wanted to be where the retail is right now, in that Shands on Main, which kudos to Shererville for having that. However, it's affecting the plaza, not by us right now. The other problem we've had is the building is too deep for retailers. It is a very deep building because it was made for Ashley's Furniture. So we have looked into breaking up the spaces, even advertising it for lease, while breaking up those spaces, and still, we have had no bites that have come to sign a lease to be able to do that. And to even be able to do that, it would cost us a significant amount of money. But again, when a bank forecloses our property, we would like to be able to sell that property and give that opportunity to a buyer. At this point in time, that's what we have. And it would work out better for the town of Shererville because longer we hold it, and if we can't get somebody to lease it, the less revenue comes to the town. We would like to see the town benefit for this and actually have additional revenue coming to you. As you heard, Trent Bauer, before I came today, I took a drive around just around our properties, because of course, when you own properties like this, you want to see what's around you, what's being put in. Across the street alone, by Strats and Walmart, there is eight vacant units there. And I know it's from dress bar, maybe Payless leaving, whatever it may be, but there's eight vacant units over there. There are smaller units, you would think, and people would want to look at those before us because we have to devise a larger unit. Next door to us, there's two vacancies there also, so we are battling with that also. So it's not that Sentier Bank has not tried to get into this property. We have taken a lot of opportunities in the last four years, and unfortunately, they just not have panned out. And this is why we really support this, and as the Trent Bauer said, the facade of the front of Ashley's is going to look the same. It may be a little higher, but it's not much, and it's going to have the same stone, which still looks beautiful. And it'll still look good for the center, it'll still look good for the town on that corner. Do you guys have any thoughts? I just appreciate you guys letting us have the time to speak tonight. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, is there any other comments for our attorney on ten items?
Yes, Mr. Smith, a member of the council. My name is Red Topper. I'm an attorney in Shererville, Indiana, at Topper Law Offices at 1415-1425 Eagle Ridge Drive. I'm here to see me as I was at the Board of Zoning Appeals remonstrating against this particular use of areas. In 2003, I offered myself purchased 3.5 acres of property from the Saucers and developed the Red Robin Restaurant that's located on US 41. We owned the property, we built the restaurant, we had the franchise, and continued to own that until 2008, when corporate Red Robin came in and took over, and now continues to own the real estate. As a part of that three and a half acres, we had the vision of building a professional office building in that area. And in 2005, we built a two-story building that is presently owned by Eagle Ridge Properties, which is myself and my two law partners, which are two of my children, okay? And we've owned that since 2005. Our office occupies 15,000 square feet on the second floor, and we have two medical tenants in the ground floor. When we built those properties, this retail center was not even built. Of course, the developer came in and built it, and as I'm sure some of you know, there's been several problems with that particular area. There's been a flooding problem that has been continuous for a long, long time. Ashley Furniture was built, and yes, it's 55,000 square feet, and we recognize that. As you know, there was a public hearing, the public hearing itself before the Board of Zoning Appeals, and there was an unfavorable recommendation, four to nothing, against this use of areas. I'm here this evening just to indicate to the council what the feelings of the people surrounding this area are, okay? I can tell you as far as Red Robin Restaurant and the land that Al owns, and he's out of town, so he couldn't be here this evening, this is not a compatible use to have storage units, you know, right next door to the south. With regard to our office building, which I look down at this building every day, it's right in front of me, I can assure you that storage units are not something I envisioned would ever be built on the property that we invested $3 million with and still continue to operate and maintain. To the west of us, there's been a very attractive two-story professional office building that was just built on Eagle Ridge Drive, and soon will be occupied by medical tenants. If you go to the south, you have Fotten Park, which are the town homes. This is all surrounding this Ashley building that, you know, can't be developed according to Sentier Bank, I guess. Then you have the Tebow Plaza, which is all retail. This particular development was built for retail, not for light industrial. And I can assure you that when it was built, there was never any intentions to put light industrial in that area. Light industrial is not a permissible use in a C3 district or in your overlay district. So as a result, they're here requesting a use of areas, as I stated and argued and commented at the Board of Zoning Appeals. One of the statutory requirements, you know, for getting a use of areas is that there is a hardship. And I can assure you, if there's a hardship here, that hardship was created by Sentier Bank when they made the loans to this particular developer, and the property failed, obviously. They took it over. And we've heard a lot of arguments today about, well, we can't fill this property. Well, you know what? Go just to the north of that property to the Old Menards. Albreter took that building and filled it with 170,000 square feet of tenants. 170,000 square feet. And the latest development was the younger alley that occupies 50,000 square feet. These properties can be developed if the right people in charge do it. I can assure you that none of the tenant, none of the property owners in the surrounding area are in favor of this particular use of areas. I don't have any problems with storage units, they just need to be in a light industrial area or your business park area, not in a C3 district. I think it's not a compatible use for that particular area right on 41. You can go down farther on Shererville, you saw the Treads have their storage units there. I mean, I'm not saying there's anything wrong with storage units, it just doesn't make sense to put it in this particular area. And, you know, don't get me wrong, I'm familiar with Mr. Nova Gordo, and I have respect for his ability, but this isn't the place to put in storage units. It's not compatible for this particular use. Don't let him sugarcoat it, okay, about all their climate control, and it's for the ladies, and it's for this and that. It's still storage units, and it doesn't fit in this area. So I would urge you, when you consider this this evening, take into consideration what the unfavorable recommendation of the BCA was regarding this particular use of areas, a four-to-nothing unanimous decision. And I know ultimately, it's within the town council's jurisdiction, you know, to make the decision. And I would urge you to deny this use of areas and let this property remain retail, what should be and what it was developed for. And I appreciate your consideration this evening. If anybody has any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Paul. Any questions? No. Thank you. Is there any more public comments from the floor regarding the ten items? Yes, please step up and state your name.
I'm Michael Sushi again, with Kelly Law Offices. I represent Giga LTD, which is the owner of the Chauvel Restaurant in Shererville. And I'm also here as a resident of Shererville. So first, as a resident side of me, with all due respect to Mr. Bauer, I've never heard the word "dynamic" used to describe a storage facility, okay? This is the crossroads of Shererville. This is one of our non-towns. To have a storage facility at the crossroads of 30 and 41, despite the fact that it's taken years to fill that vacant property, doesn't mean we should just jump at the first chance we have to do so. As Mr. Topper as well pointed out, said, whether it be our alley or some of the other places that are there, there will be the right fit at some point. A storage facility is... That would be on my lawyer cap for Mr. Scals of Chauvel Restaurant. I would just like to say that, as Mr. Bauer pointed out, there will be less traffic if you have a storage facility here than there was for Ashley. That is not a plus, okay? You have a food and a restaurant there, you have Rise and Roll, which is a breakfast bakery there, you have Chauvel there. That's three restaurants right in that area, not to mention Red Robin and what else is around there. Restaurants rely on foot traffic to a large degree. So when you have a mall or you have some attraction there, that brings in people, those people that eat at your restaurants in the area. So to have a lack of traffic in that area is not a plus for any of the businesses that currently occupy your town. for any of the businesses that currently occupy your town. I'm going to let Mr. Scialzo talk a little bit more about that. But as Mr. Topper said, this is not what this area was designed for, okay? And to have to go down thirty and forty-one and see a storage facility there is not something I believe the residents would want. I think there will be a fit and we shouldn't jump at the first chance we get just because it hasn't been a couple of years since Ashley moved out.
Hello, Council. My name is Joe Scialzo, the owner of Chobala Restaurant in Sherwood, fifteen fourteen US forty-one, the same Plaza. I just want to voice out that I think a storage unit, like Mr. Bauer said, should be placed somewhere in more of an industrial area. When I moved in eleven years ago, that was a prime spot, thirty and forty-one, Crossroads of America. Amazing, everybody wanted to be there. It was the place to be, a place to have a retail, a beautiful fine wine restaurant. That was my vision, that's what I did. We built our clientele, clientele. It's a fine wine restaurant. Most of our clientele from the surrounding area comes in, they like to sit down our windows. They like to view outside. We created plants, we put in, we tried to beautify the outside area to make it pleasant for our diners as well. But again, seeing the storage unit, I think it doesn't find, it doesn't follow to accomplish the plan that Sherwood had designed for that when I started eleven years ago. That area should have retail, should have more of restaurants and other retail, not storage facilities. Not to say anything bad about storage facilities, but again, I think it will be a nice store. It will be just something, a two-story, a storage unit coming through Route forty-one and third. It will be just something that doesn't, you know, it's not very pleasing to our customers, our clientele, even the other restaurants, if I can speak on behalf of that, as well as clients, Rise and Roll, the, you know, the Red Robin. So I think that's something that we should consider this evening. And already, like Mr. Topper said, we are, we do have problems with flooding issues in that area there. So again, creating construction, two-story buildings, that area is just, you know, I think we should reconsider putting the storage unit in there and making, maybe dividing that unit in several other retail spots to give opportunities to other small businesses, like myself, to develop and be part of the beautiful thirty and forty-one, the Crossroads of America. So that is my concern. And again, if you have any questions, I can answer them for you. Thank you for hearing this out as well. Thank you, Mr. Topper.
Thank you for subscribing.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No.
Any other public comments regarding item items? Any more public comments regarding item items? If the public comments close, there will be one public comment at the end of the meeting house.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Given the nature of the public comments, do you and your council want to consider taking on that item now and including it? You may adjust your agenda if you'd like to do that.
Yeah, I'll just continue with the agenda. At this time, old business, one can lie on old business, I may. It's considered a variance of use to allow twelve by twenty-four Chinese-made LED billboard advertising sign to be located within the US forty-one Commercial Corridor, Overlay District. This was deferred from the September ninth, twenty twenty meeting. Board of Zoning Appeals Case twenty dash seven dash twenty-four. Petitioners SCC Route forty-one and sixty-seventh LLC. Location is west of fourteen sixty-five US forty-one. It comes with an unfavorable recommendation from the BZA of three to zero. I'd also like to put in the record a letter from the attorney from SCC Route forty-one and sixty-seven. It says, Dear Mr. Schmidt, Mr. Volpin, this letter shall serve as a withdrawal of the petition for a variance of use to allow twelve times twenty-four LED billboard advertising sign to be located within the forty-one Commercial Corridor, Overlay District. Our client is considering various alternatives and options relative to the petition and therefore requests withdrawal. Thank you for your consideration. Very truly yours, James Weezer from Weezer and Wiley, LLC. Mr. Volpin, any comments?
Yes, I'm sure, I received Mr. Weezer's letter today and I did speak to him. This is, this did close the vote majority at the BCA and has a recommendation for the council. You can accept Mr. Weezer's proposal or you can take action. If you take action following the BCA recommendation and deny this petition, they cannot appear with the same petition for a year, according to our department. So it's up to you as the council, it's your decision. It is a variance of use.
Thank you, Mr. Volpin. Mr. Austin, that is correct?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Pleasure to the board.
Mr. Chairman, Board of Zoning Appeals Case twenty dash seven dash twenty-four. Based on the unfavorable recommendation from the BCA of a order of three to zero, I make a motion to deny a variance of use.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. President, we're taking the vote. May I suggest that the motion maker add the findings of fact and determination of the BCA for the record of this proceeding on this action?
So amended, Mr. President.
All motions amended? Seconds amended? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Next item is a new business, is I may as a public hearing. Mr. Trox.
Yes, Mr. President. This is the public hearing that we proposed, twenty twenty-one Town Budget Number nineteen fifty-eight. And I have given you Form Three, everyone, because I have that budget. And I'd just like to introduce this at this time and then you can hand in the public hearing. This is one of three hearings that we held at the town that proposed twenty twenty-one budget. This is a public hearing and this is the beginning of the meeting to speak. In reference to locations, the meeting notice needed to be submitted through the State Gateway Program at least ten days prior to next meeting. And it was submitted on Thursday, October first, twenty twenty. As I mentioned, I provided you the Form Three, which is the budget estimate for the year twenty twenty-one that was submitted through Gateway. I did use best practices that we have in the past regarding increases in this budget to get it to the state, knowing most likely that they're going to cut it based on that. But as you've heard before, in previous years, my previous clear treasurer, that you can, you can never increase the budget after you submit it, you can only reduce it. So I did what the increases are high enough where no one had really reduced. So it's time you could hold your public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Trox. And a public hearing on Proposed Twenty Twenty-One Town Budget Orders Number nineteen fifty-eight. At this time, I will call open to the public hearing. I'll open it up to the floor for a public hearing in the oral or written, in the sense. And if there isn't, we will uphold the law. Is anyone that likes to make comment on the proposed budget? No comments from the proposed budget? Any town council comments? Who said it? No comments from the town council? At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President?
Mr. Gasol?
Your question.
All right. Mr. President, motion to authorize Clear Treasurer to prepare all documents pertinent to the twenty twenty-one budget for final action on Wednesday, October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty, at six P M at this meeting.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the time, B Resolution twenty twenty dash sixteen, the resolution to transfer plots within the category of appropriations. Mr. Trox.
Yes, as earlier we did, we tell you, these are transfers that need to be done. There was other expenses that were seen at the beginning of budget season. So we are transferring from the, each fund from there one item to the other to cover expenses toward the end of year.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve Resolution twenty twenty dash sixteen.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. I M C is considered a variance of use to allow an automotive and tire service facility and potential restaurant to be located within the US forty-one Commercial Corridor, Overlay District. This is BZA Case twenty dash seven dash twenty-three. The petitioner is SCC Route forty-one and sixty-seventh LLC. The location is west of fourteen sixty-five US forty-one. This came with a favorable recommendation to the town council of three to one. I also like to read a letter to us that was received today regarding this matter. Our client SCC Route forty-one, sixty-seven LLC, is from BZA Case Number twenty dash seven dash twenty-four. Dear Mr. Schmidt, Mr. Volpin, earlier this morning, I sent a letter relative to withdrawal petition on the previous BZA case. And subsequent to doing so, I realized that the above captioned matter was also scheduled on your agenda for this evening. On behalf of our client and I, I am requesting a defer of this matter to the next month due to the fact that I have an irreconcile conflict, I'm sorry, irreconcilable conflict and unable to attend tonight's meeting. Unfortunately, I did not realize the conflict until I looked at my calendar at this point and so I apologize for the length of this request. However, I would point out that pursuant to the Indiana statutes, the town council has ninety days to which to act on the certification of the BZA favorable recommendation. So fortunately, no one is present to be briefly delayed. We will be prepared to proceed at our November meeting. Thank you for your consideration in this matter. And should you have any questions or concerns, please do not hesitate to contact me. Very truly yours, James Weezer from Weezer and Wiley, LLC. I would entertain a motion for the defer.
Motion to defer. Second.
We have a motion and we have a second to defer BZA Case twenty dash seven dash twenty-three. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No others? Motion carries four one. Next item on the agenda is I M P. It's considered a variance to be abused to allow a two-story climate-controlled storage facility within the US forty-one Commercial Corridor, Overlay District. BZA Case twenty dash nine dash twenty-five. Petitioners Noah Broder Gravies LLC, Attorney Greg Byer, Koransky, Bauer and Peretti. Location is fifteen sixteen dash fifteen thirty US forty-one. This comes with an unfavorable recommendation to the town council, four to zero. This is a case that we heard all the comments earlier in the meeting. Mr. Volpin, any further comments?
No further comments. My suggestion would be that you actually take the reverse of the findings of fact from the BZA.
Mr. Austin, any comments? Standing by. For record.
Mr. Redd, I would like to make a motion to deny the variance of use requests to allow a two-story climate-controlled storage facility within the US forty-one Commercial Corridor, Overlay District, based upon the unfavorable recommendations of the town council at BZA, including their findings of fact and evidence submitted to the hearing.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. I M P is considered acceptance of application of Close Azad Improvement Program for twenty-six thousand four hundred eighty-nine dollars and ninety-four cents for the redevelopment commission agenda. The applicants, Kelly Law, Christians LLC, sixteen nineteen Junction Avenue, came with a favorable recommendation by Tom Fasada, Judiciary Committee of three to zero.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman. Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. I M F is considered release of portion of subdivision cash security for portion addition in the amount of six thousand nine hundred dollars for completed infrastructure. Mr. Gere, enormous.
Yes, it's a small subdivision on Seventy-Fifth Avenue, right by Camden Goods. The person has completed the construction there and is hoping to release his surety.
Thank you.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. I M P is considered acceptance of donations of one thousand eight hundred thirty-five dollars. Mr. Trox, would you, it's a pleasure of reading those donations for us.
Yes, I do. Just one housekeeping, I'd like to mention that during the roll call, I failed to mention my name that's here. So Clear Treasurer, my Trox was here for the record. These are exceptions where through the end of September, we totaled one thousand eight hundred thirty-five dollars. We received donation fund from the fire, through fire department. We received one an optimisation of a hundred dollars. And a donation of six hundred eighty-seven dollars from G J G G Inc., through Business as a Great Place. That donation was from nine fourteen for a total of seven hundred eighty-seven dollars in fire departments. We donated to the Sherwood Animal Control, to the Sherwood Police Department, donation of one hundred, twenty dollars for animal control. Donation to the Police and Fire Ninety-One Fund. We have donation for Rich Green, fifty dollars and minus two dollars. And Loretta Kujawa for one hundred dollars for a total of one hundred fifty-two dollars to the Ninety-One Fund. To the COVID nineteen relief fund. We had an in-kind donation from Root Brothers Manufacturing. We donated three cases of one hundred milliliters personal size gel hand sanitizer. One hundred case for three hundred count total. Also, three cases of one gallon liquid hand sanitizer. We finished a four, one gallon bottles case, twelve case for count total. That was an in-kind value of two hundred and forty-six dollars, a one of in-kind value of six hundred and thirty-three hand gel. For a total in-kind value of eight hundred and seventy-six dollars. Total monetary donations were a hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Total in-kind, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars for a total of one thousand eight hundred thirty-five dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Trox.
Motion to accept the petition.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Mr. Chairman, before you open it to the floor, I would just say, I would say one thing to Chief Sormas. Chief, personally, I want to thank you for the fine job that you're managing and doing in the Sherwood Forest subdivision. You know, with everything going on, so I'm going to stay down here.
Thank you. We do have some more saturated controls coming up over the next few weeks.
That's fine. Good job.
Just one more comment on my name, Mr. Chairman. I can congratulate our esteemed town council president who was recently married. Congratulations. But there is no cake tonight.
Yeah, drinks are on the menu. I guess I should have brought a cake, yes, sir. Yes, I was married in Vegas on Saturday night.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll open up to the business from the floor. Any other comments or any business from the floor? No other comments? This means adjourned. Thank you very much.